Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and good morning, and welcome to the City Council Study Session for March the 1st. We are all present and accounted for. The first item on our agenda for today is to review the agenda for the March 5th regular council meeting, so council please refer to that document. Mr. Freeman, thank you for letting me borrow your glasses today. Mine are in my car. I appreciate it. So this meeting might drag on a little bit, and if I mispronounce some words, just let me know. All right, thank you. First several items are liquor license applications, followed by purchase contracts, and resolutions, introduction of zoning ordinances. Currently, the only items off the consent agenda are a public hearing about a minor general plan amendment, and it looks like zoning matters related thereto. Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, on item 7, which is both the minor general plan amendment and the rezoning, historically, we've always handled those hearings combined. You do the general plan hearing and the zoning hearing, and we should do that again for this one. But if the general plan amendment's not adopted and passed, then as a matter of law, the zoning cannot be adopted, because you have to zone consistent with the general plan. So there won't be a need to then vote on it. So we'll do the hearing combined like we do, but there'll be separate votes. If the first vote, if it doesn't pass, legally, you won't need to vote on the second one. And also, the reason why you want to combine the hearing together is that way, if someone wants to speak on the zoning, you want to give them an opportunity to speak before you vote on the general plan, because otherwise, you'll never even call really the zoning case. They wouldn't have had a chance to speak. So that's also the benefit of combining the hearing together, so that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. And that's historically how we've always done it.
Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification. Mr. Brady?
Separate from that item, going back to 5A and 5B. 5A, we've been asked to remove that from the agenda for Monday. Councilman Thompson, would you, anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I think they're having some administrative procedural issues with that, so 5A is going to be removed from the agenda altogether. But I'd like to let folks know that we do support that. Santan and Corporation, the folks have been a really good partner with us throughout this entire procedure. They've done a great job of keeping us in the loop. They have a lot of the same values that we do, as far as wanting to continue to see Jermaine Road be that employment corridor. And so I was very supportive of them moving forward, and I look forward to them coming back in the very near future and taking another attempt at this.
Okay. So 5A will be removed from the agenda?
That's correct, Mayor. And then, just a reminder, if you recall, item 5B, we had a resident show up, express some concerns regarding that extinguishing the drain adjustment. We have met with them, Beth Hunning's met with them, and our understanding is he is now, understands the provisions that are being made to address any drainage issues. So I think we're fine to move forward at this time. We appreciate his involvement. He was representing many of the residents' concerns in that area, and I think we were able to educate him on the process and provisions that were in place, so.
Well, thank you to you and to Beth for resolving that. It seemed like there was some good faith questions, and I'm not surprised to hear it was resolved well. Any other questions regarding our agenda for Monday, council? Okay, the next item then on the agenda for this meeting is information pertaining to current job order contracting projects, council. As you review those, any concerns or questions?
Mayor, on that specifically, on job order contracting, we would propose that oftentimes, that item, we've moved it up in the agenda. Sometimes, it requires a lot of staff to be here. We may just put that in the city manager's update from now on, but then ask council if you have any questions. We can certainly put it back on the agenda. But for now, I think we'll just keep it on this. We will provide the information to you, but it'll be through the city manager's update, as opposed to having staff have to be here each week for those items, if that's okay. All right, thank you.
That makes a lot of sense. So if we do see somebody who have a question on, maybe the burden ought to be on us to let you know, rather than have you bring the whole staff down, have an anticipation that we might have a question, right?
And if there's some unique ones that we think need your attention, we'll certainly bring those forward also.
Okay, great. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and discuss the city's financial forecast on the general government funds. Candace, welcome back.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. With me today, I would like to introduce Brian Richel. He is one of our deputy directors in Office of Management and Budget. And this morning, we're going to really go over kind of our annuals, our annual process coming to you, and kind of giving you an update on where we think we sit on our financial forecast for the general governmental funds. So just a reminder, when we talk about general governmental, we're talking about the general fund and then the quality of life fund. And so those two kind of funds, we put together, and we call them general governmental. But that way, we've got a public safety as part of both of those. I do want to make one quick apology on the slides numbers, so please use the slide numbers when you're going through from the PDF. Something happened on the bottom, and they renumbered themselves about three times. So don't use the bottom ones on these slides, so I apologize. I'll try to, I'll have Brian tell me what slide we're on as we go through, if we need to refer to something. So just as a quick reminder, last year, we did quite a few presentations on what our process is and how we actually walk through the forecasting. So I don't really want to spend too much time on that this year, unless you do have some specific questions about what our process is in Office of Management and Budget and how we go about coming up with our numbers. Just as a real quick overview, we do look at historical trends. We do a lot of econometrics and that sort of thing. We do multi-years. This is a multi-year forecast. We don't just look at one year at a time. We're always looking at five years, eight years, 10 years out, trying to see what's coming down in the pipeline. One of our city's financial policies calls for the use of ongoing revenues to cover ongoing expenses. That's one of the things that we look at. So we're trying to match that up as we go forward to make sure, as things come online, we have the revenues to support those items going forward. One other thing, we do have collaboration with the University of Arizona with their forecasting. We actually do receive the raw data and use the raw data to try to look at how that pertains to Mesa and forecast going forward. So there's, we won't kind of do that, go over that too much this time. One thing that is different from last year, and so I do want to point out, as we're going through, it's been quite a while since we start, since the recession originally started, and as we've been in kind of this moderate coming back up, you know, this moderate recovery. At this point in the forecast, as we're looking out in our five-year forecast, at this point, we are adding an economic correction to the forecast. And so you'll see that as we go through, and we'll talk about how that would affect us. We have not had an economic correction in quite some time in the economy, and so we're looking that we feel relatively confident that within the next five years, we'll experience some type of a correction. And so we'll walk through that. So that is different from the forecast that we presented to you last year. We weren't quite ready to put it into last year's forecast, and now we think it's the time to address it. So as a reminder, as we're looking at our governmental revenues, we have three major streams that come into this particular area. That's our city sales tax. You see, that's the top blue line. So that is our local city of Mesa sales tax. And then we also have our state shared revenues, and we'll go through that, exactly what those are, as well as our enterprise transfer to the general fund. So where we have placed the economic correction is in fiscal year 2021. So if you look at that top blue line for the sales tax, you can kind of see with that little bit of a dip, that's the economic correction that we have forecasted at this point, that was not in there last year. We went out to '22, '23, so that you can see in our state shared revenues, and I'll show that to you in a minute, our urban revenue sharing, which is also known as income tax, has a two-year delay. So anytime there's any type of a correction, we won't actually feel that for another two years, and that's why you see that kind of tail down a little bit at the end. So there's a delay in those. As we look forward, these are kind of the numbers behind the scenes. As we look into the '18-'19 forecast, one of the things that I do like to remind you each year, as we look at our urban revenue sharing number for '18-'19, that number is the known number. So that's not a forecast. Because there is that delay, we do know what that number is. Now that we kind of change based on population each year, it might change ever so slightly based on how our population is growing compared to all the other municipalities, but other than that, the base number is a known number. The rest of those are forecasted numbers from our office.
The enterprise transfers, have we said the enterprise transfers? We're currently setting that at CPI growth. So each year through the forecast, we just anticipate CPI growth, and that's what we forecast to transfer from the enterprise fund to the general fund. Thank you. Just a reminder, our local sales tax, local sales tax has many different components within there, different types of businesses. And the very top line is our retail sales, and that's why, you can see why we spend so much time looking at our retail sales and seeing what our base is and how we can improve that base going forward, because that is the largest component of that. And we can see all the other categories there as well. Okay, state shared revenues. Again, there are three major components in state shared revenues, and the top one is that urban revenue sharing, again, also known as income tax. And then you can, again, see that is a known, kind of known number, a little bit farther out because of that lag between when it's received by the state and when it's received by the city of Mesa. Okay, those are the revenue side, so there's, as we're going to go on, we're going to go on to the expenditure side now. So just as a real quick review, when we look at our expenditure side of the budget, there are three main areas of the budget. One is personal services, that we usually spend quite a bit of time on with you, as well as our other services and commodities, so if you hear us say those terms. And then also capital. Capital could be large construction projects, or it could be the purchase of vehicles and small equipment, and that type of a thing would fit into the capital category. Within this forecast, we have incorporated the public safety retirement system contribution at the 25-year unfunded liability payment plan. That's what we went over with council last year, when we had that ability to go to lengthen. We chose not to lengthen to the full 30 years. We officially lengthened to the full 30 years with the anticipation we would actually do a payment plan on the 25-year repayment plan. And we have continued that into next year, as well as throughout the forecast. That has been included in there. Arizona State Retirement contributions are not really moving that much, although we will see some movement over the next three years as they are adjusting their rate of return on their investments. They'll be adjusting, they adjusted that this year, and they'll be adjusting their rates to compensate for that over the next three years. So we'll see small increases in that area over the next three years. Medical premiums, we're looking at right now. There are good, there is good news on the medical premium side. We are seeing reduced claim costs from what we anticipated. Still, it's still increasing each year, but it's reduced from what we thought it was going to increase to. And so at this point, we're looking at increasing our contributions to that fund by only 4%. Last year, we anticipated going to 8% this year, so we were able to bring that down to 4%. We're still including 8% in the outer years, because that is the national trend, is 7% to 8% on medical costs. So we're keeping that in there for now, but a lot of the changes, I think, that we're making, moving to Cigna, changing our different plans and so forth, is really helping us overall, and our claims are down. Debt service, really, this is really just a reminder that when we talk about the general governmental funds, debt service is not a factor in these funds. There is very little debt service. It's about $160,000 a year from the general fund that actually goes to support debt. General obligation debt is backed by secondary property tax, and so it does not come through the general fund. We do have a couple areas of larger areas that we transfer, so when you hear us talk about transferring to other funds, what we're usually talking about is both the Arts and Culture Fund, which was separated out a few years ago for better management. That way, they can see their revenues and the transfer into that fund, and so they can manage it a little bit better. So you'll hear us talk about that. Also, the transit. So we have a transit fund that is separate. It allows our transit-related revenues coming from the state to go into a separate restricted fund, so they're only used on transit, and then we augment that fund with the remaining dollars that are needed for those services. Included in this forecast is the Gilbert Light Rail Extension opening. So for next year, we will see a partial, a couple months, when we are anticipating a May opening at this point. And so you have a couple months of operations and maintenance in next year's budget, when we come to you with the proposed budget, and then the full cost in the fiscal year 1920 budget. And again, these are the general governmental expenditures. These are just the numbers and the percentages behind that we're looking at. One of the things I do want to kind of point out on the personal services side, when we're looking at the increase going into '18-'19, it is a 1.5% increase. That does look like it's a little bit lower than we would normally have, and that's because of all the pension increases in '17-'18, because it was kind of a one-time bump, and that's a new base. And so it's kind of a combination of that. And then we also did some one-time money to the police department for, as they were going to transition some of their civilianization of some of their positions, that gave them some one-time money in '17-'18 that you don't see in '19. So it kind of skews that. It'd probably be about 2.3% or 2.5% increase in personal services, which is about normal.
The reason behind civilianization is to lower costs. So why, last year, when we were in that transition, is there some, why is there some initial cost to transform from, in a cost-saving, why does it cost money to save money?
Mayor, that's a great question. So what that is, is the positions were civilianized, and what that means is the sworn positions were removed from the budgeted positions, but civilian positions were added. The civilian positions are a lower cost than the sworn positions. So over the long term of the ongoing cost, the costs are lower. However, it takes time to hire those civilians, so in the meantime, we're still paying sworn personnel to do those duties, because the duties didn't go away. And so not last year, it was about $2.1 million was added to the police, was, I don't want to say added, it was kept in the police department's budget to continue paying the sworn personnel until the civilians could be hired. And then at that time, the sworn personnel go into the budgeted positions just through attrition. So as people leave, retirements happen, those personnel go into a budgeted position. So meanwhile, they're in essence overhired by those positions. We have more sworn than we have budgeted positions until they attrition in to those positions.
So for a period of time, we have both positions in the budget?
Correct, we're bringing the civilians, and then we're also trying to get the sworn into budgeted positions.
So we're overstaffed for a little bit during the transition period?
Correct.
So, and Mayor and Council, I think it's a good point, because a lot of times, I've heard comments made about trying to track the number of sworn officers over the years, and that's kind of been held up as a standard. I think one of the things we worked on last year was, just having sworn officers doesn't actually mean number of officers on patrol. And so what we've been able to do, in working with the police department, the chief's office, and even for Chief Altestia, Chief DeVorek, when he was here, one of the things we worked on was increasing the number of officers on patrol. And that meant that we civilianized several positions that were in some of the more administrative or investigative areas. And so by making this transition and putting more civilians in those positions, we then could take, even though the number of sworn officers may be fewer, we actually put more officers on the street and less of them in administrative and investigative work. And so we replaced those with these civilian positions. And I know Chief Altestia will continue to look at that, because obviously, the economics, the unit cost for a civilian to do the same work as a sworn officer is significantly different. And so obviously, for a sworn officer, the one value, the greatest value they have is being out on the streets and patrolling. And that's been our emphasis, is actually to increase the number of officers on patrol, and that's our goal. And this was just kind of one of those transitional costs, Mayor, to get there until we could move the sworn out of those positions, but we needed some time to do that.
I get it. Thank you.
As we look at financial sustainability and how do we, how do we create and maintain financial sustainability, because that is one of the goals of the city on the financial side, and that's what really the forecasting allows us to do, is to make sure that we're not making short-term decisions that have long-term ramifications that are unknown. And so we want to be able to look at that and make sure that we are planning for the future, and that's what we're doing, trying to do today, is to actually plan going forward for the future. One of the things that we look at, as we talked about, when we looked at the sales tax, and you can see the dependency on the revenues between the sales tax, the state shared revenue, and then the, and then the enterprise transfer over from, to the general fund, is we're trying to look at that, and the way to do that is to grow your base. And so one of the things that we always look at as we're forecasting is, when we're forecasting our sales tax, it's not just our current, current folks that are out there buying in Mesa, but how do we grow that base, to have more people buying or to have them buying more? There's, you know, those two different things on how you can grow your base. So one of the things that we're looking at for financial sustainability is, what are the expenses that we're going to have, the demands for our service? You know, what are our demands for our service going forward? And what is that base of revenue? Whether it's the base of revenue from Arizona through revenue sharing, or the base of revenue here in the city of Mesa, in order to support those demands for service? As we put it all together, we kind of check our revenues, and we check our expenses, and we put them all together, and we see now, what does that actually look like? And so we've shown these to you before we came back last year. This is kind of our normal of how to kind of put it together and see where we're at. These are the numbers here, and then in a minute, we'll look at the graph, which I think is really good. What I do want to point out here is how we are trying to plan today for that economic recession that we think will happen over the next five years. And we want to plan for that today, rather than react to it in the future. So one of the things that we have put in place into our forecast, and you can kind of see that little extra line on this particular graph, and it's called future economic correction, is to actually set aside funds as we can in order to have them available to us when that economic correction happens in the future. That would allow us to continue to sustain our quality services with that slight dip in our revenues during those couple of years before our revenues maybe catch back up again. And so you can see that that's how we've kind of planned as we put this in here, and how can we save for today to make sure that we can get, continue to do the services tomorrow going forward? So that is a new, something that we have not had last year when we presented this to you.
So Mayor and Council, for those of us who were here back in the 2008, '09, '10, when we went through fairly significant downturn, this is a pretty modest reserve against what we actually experienced back then. But just having gone through that back in 2008, 2009, we, in one year, had to come up with about, between what we lost in revenues and what we had to make up in expenditures, we were around $64 million eventually had to adjust for. Obviously, we can't put that kind of, those dollars aside, but what actually helped us make it through the most critical months, in the first year and a half, when our sales tax dollars were falling off by 30% or 40%, is we had built up, and we had a significant reserves to absorb that. And so really, what we're bringing is, since that time, though, when we started the recovery, and we've built up our reserves, you've noticed over the last couple of years, we've been kind of drawing down on our reserves, and we've been very concerned about that over the forecast period. I think what we're trying to present to council today is actually, even though we keep talking about the, a possibility of an economic downturn, which we, just everybody would tell you that sometime in the next five years, that's probably going to happen, because it's now been, I think, I think everybody's suggesting 2010 might have been the era when we came out of the recession, so we're well into the next cycle. But I think what I would give some optimism to the council is, we're actually still presenting to you a forecast that meets all our financial goals as far as reserves. We have struggled to do that, present that to you over the last couple of years. So this is, I think, a cautious budget, but it's also an optimistic budget. We've just experienced some really good sales tax months. We received our December sales tax returns recently, and I don't know if we've looked, it was higher than last year's.
It was higher than last year's, yes. It was our best December ever.
So we're, that's good. So financially for the city, I think there's actually a lot of good news in here, to the point where we feel like, when we're kind of in this, doing very well economically, this is the time to prepare for that day that we won't be. We're trying to be very modest about it. We're not trying to completely pull tons of resources out here. You can see it's a pretty modest number, but we think it's a good idea to at least recognize that we really think it's a real possibility, and every year that it doesn't happen, we think that possibility gets even more likely. And we've set it out fairly far into the future, three years out, I guess, and...
Right, we have it, 2021 is when we have forecasted.
So that's the context, the framework in which we're presenting, how we're going to move forward with the budgeting is, and the good news with all of that, even pulling those numbers out, we, again, like I said, even in that final year of the forecast, and this is kind of how we look at sustainability and where we stand as a city, we still maintain all our financial reserves. And for us, that's good news. It's better news than we've probably presented to this council in the last three years or so. So that's kind of the framework. We wanted you to at least understand where we're coming from in our forecast, so.
Yes, Mr. Whitaker?
I think from the budget presentation from last year, if I remember correctly, it was forecast, and correct me if I'm wrong, that our general fund actually ran out of money forecasting in fiscal year 2021. Is that correct?
I'd have to go back and look at which year it was, but yes, on the out years, we weren't able to maintain our reserve balances.
So now, this projection this year is showing a $60 million variance from what we were presented to last year. What would you say are the top three contributing factors to the fact that you now believe we'll have $60 million in reserves in 2021 versus running out of money by 2021?
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, I can probably come up with the top two, and then I'd probably have to look to...
Fair enough. Yeah, I don't really agree with you. I just mean like, yeah, generally speaking.
Right. So one of the, one of the items is that the increase in the local sales tax just started about the time that we were adopting the budget last year. And so at the time that we were adopting the budget, we weren't already seeing a trend. We were seeing okay sales tax, but it really wasn't, wasn't a trend yet that we were ready to count on. The compounding of that over a five-year time period is rather significant, when you, if you conclude that as your new base. That would be one of the items that's coming in, as we're seeing this coming in through this year. So we're still above budget this year for what we anticipated for sales tax, and then that becomes our new base going out.
Help me understand that. When you say compounding, what percentage did it change, I guess, year over year? And then are you saying that you assume that change, that percentage change will continue all the way until 2021?
On top, compounding on top of it?
Compound, so, so even if, so if we have one really good year, the next year, if we think that next year's still going to go up 1.2% or 2.3% or something like that, you're now going up on a larger base.
So we're very cautious about getting caught up in compounding of revenue forecasting?
Sure.
Because you just assume every year is going to be much better than the other?
Right.
And then we step back and go, oh, wait a minute, that meant we actually think we're going to go up 15%? And that's, we, you know, experience shows that's really not a true economics, and so we have to be careful that, how far out you compound those numbers, even at 2% or 3%, we're very careful about how that keep, accumulation of that compounding and building on top of that base impacts the revenues, or realistically, are the revenues going to do, act like that, behave like that?
Fair. So what was the increase in local sales tax? Like, what was that percentage that you're now using to calculate those numbers?
I'm going to have to go back.
About 3%. We can look at it later, I don't want to...
Yeah, sorry, if you go back in the beginning, we should have the percentage increase on the sales tax?
Yeah, it's back in the beginning.
On the revenue side.
Okay. And then you said there was two things primarily that changed the forecast?
Right, and then the second one that I would actually go to is probably the public safety retirement system. So back when we did the budget for last year, we had two things in there. One, we were still at the repayment plan of 20 years, which is a higher contribution rate that's required every year. And then, and also, we had put in a placeholder into next year's budget into '18-'19, anticipating additional court, the effect of additional court, the court cases that were going to come through. And we wanted to make sure that we had those things covered. And so we were conservative, and we put in our estimates in. Now that we have those two things, so one, we've extended, so we're now on the 25-year repayment plan versus the 20-year payment plan, and that does constitute some savings every year within the forecast. And then also, the impact of those court cases were not as great as we thought they were going to be, and so we were able to bring down that estimate, which again, was included in every year of the forecast. So if you take those, kind of, those two things, both on the revenue side and then some decreased expenses, between those two things, you actually get, as you go three, four, or five years out, that does make a significant difference in the forecast.
Candace, I'll give you a third one. We, the building permit activity?
Yes.
We, I think it surprised us that, as robust as it was, had been in the prior year, that it continued into the next year and continues. I don't think we anticipated that it would be at that level of activity consecutively years. That was, that was just not, well, you probably wouldn't have liked us if we'd projected that. Nobody would have believed us, but it's been very healthy for us, and again, we continue to see it happen. Now, again, kind of thinking about a correction, the question is, well, how sustainable can that be over a five-year forecast? We think at some point, that's going to level off, or, and when we say drop, I mean, it's going to drop off a historic high number per year as far as building permit activity, but the consistency of that year over year, month over month, has been much higher than we expected, and so that's also, you're seeing that reflected now in the budget, in the the forecast also.
When you say the building permit activity, is that like the actual cost of building permits? Or are you saying that has an effect on something else, and that's why you're measuring?
Well, first of all, we get building permit revenues, which are fairly significant that come to the city. And usually, that also entails other fees that are coming into the utilities and impact fees that are coming to the city.
Right, and it's a great, and it's also just a great indicator of, of the building that's coming in and the growth, and then that then helps us to be more confident in that our sales tax numbers are maybe a new norm, rather than maybe just a one, kind of a one-year thing. And so, as we put all those things together, we look at what we're trending in sales tax today, but also what we're trending in, in permits, which for us is the beginning of the pipeline for sales tax, and can we count on that sales tax to continue at that level? We kind of look at the permits and see whether the permits coming in, and are we confident that the sales tax is going to continue? If we had sales tax coming in greater than we anticipated, but we had no permits coming in, then we'd have, we'd start looking for other factors as what's causing the sales tax to go up, and we would probably be less confident that that's our new base, and more, and more reliant that, well, maybe that's a one-time thing we don't want to count on. So, we really look at all of these different factors around the city together, and that lets us know what our confidence is in including or not including, or to what level through the forecast.
But, Councilman, to your point, also contracting sales tax is part of that kind of impact of the, of the activity, and construction, construction.
Construction sales tax.
Construction sales tax is something we have to be careful with, because we kind of get it, we don't want to get addicted to that and build that into the base, because as those permits fall off, or the construction activity falls off, that goes away. It's not a, it's really not like other retail that's kind of built into the base. It's kind of a one-time, you know, we can see it, we can see it when an apple plant is built, or a manufacturing plant, we can actually see those numbers, but we're not going to get one of those, well, we hope. We'd like one every year, but some, you know, we know that's probably not going to always happen. So, we have to be careful how we include that in our forecast, and assuming that's going, is that going to happen every year, or do we take that out of the forecast and project everything else out?
And that's a great comment we should probably, probably talk to you real quick, because I've talked about that in past presentations, and it's kind of gone away, but now that contracting sales tax is kind of coming back up again, well, we kind of fell into that in the past during the recession, was having contracting sales tax in there, and then kind of counting on that going into the forecast, and then having it go away. And so, one of the things we put in place since the recession was to really kind of look at what is our base, contracting sales tax? What is, what is the normal ebb and flow regardless of what the economy is doing? There's always going to be ebb and flow within construction, and we kind of use that as our base, and we count that as kind of ongoing. When we talk about matching ongoing revenues and ongoing expenses, we do take a look at our construction sales tax, and when we feel that there's a year that maybe is higher than what we think is something that we can continue, we actually look at that and make, and try to set that aside for the one-time items, our lifecycle items, or some type of another construction, or, or an upgrade on software, or something like that, to make sure that we're not counting that every year to cover personnel. So, we do try to take a look at that as one piece of our sales tax picture. Okay, and this is the.
I'm sorry, Candace, on that topic, are there other questions on this, Council? My recollections, for the last several years, our approach has been to reserve our, to reduce our, our balance, our reserve balance, thinking that, you know, we're up in the 23% reserves, and I think we've established a policy that we, maybe that's higher than it needs to be. And so, we've had a very conservative budget process. We've asked departments to reduce, but we've also adopted the policy that we're going to engage in deficit spending, that we're going to spend down our reserve. And the good news is that we've been bad at that, because the economy has overperformed our expectations. We had very conservative estimates, economy outperformed, and so, we've been, we failed at our, at our goal to, to lower our, our reserve balance. Am I, am I generally correct here?
Well, it was a goal.
Yes.
And as Councilman Whitaker pointed out, though, we had, the, the challenge is not, you can't just look at the year you're in, you have to look at for the five years. And, and I think we had in the prior years, we had a point where the reserves were well below what our goal had been. And to your point, Mayor, the, the form, the problem, the challenge we had was the structural imbalance, where there were years where the expenses were higher than the, current expenditures were higher than the current revenues, and so, we were having to draw down the fund balance. You still see that happening in this chart, right?
And we were doing that by design. Our, our budget, we were, we were budgeting on spending more money than we were taking in, so we could reduce our reserve.
Well, we were, to, I think we, we saw that as, I don't know if we're, we're doing it by design, but we were also, we, we saw, we saw the benefit of having that reserve that allowed us to continue to, to draw it down, but because we had certain expenditures, we realized that it wouldn't be sustainable for a long period of time, to your, I guess, to your point.
So, that, that's my ultimate question. And just looking at this chart, it looks like obviously, we are reducing the percent that's in our reserve budget, you know, by 2% or 3% over the course of 10 years, or what, I guess it's not 10.
Five years.
Five years, out to 2023. And if things go according to projection, and of, obviously, we know they won't, so there'll be some deviation, but if things did go exactly to prediction, then we'd be at 8% in our reserve balance.
Which is right at the bottom of our goal.
Which is, yeah, so that, that, that's my question.
Yeah, but.
8% seems a little less than we would like it to be, particularly in this kind of, where we're predicting some volatility.
Right.
And a potential downturn.
And that's why, Mayor, the reason that's at 8% is because we've taken some dollars out of this. In this forecast, we've accommodated and pulled some dollars out for that downturn. So, effective, we could, the other way.
Where did we put them, if not in?
It's right there in that line that says.
Yeah, so Mayor, if you look down the line, it says Future Economic Correction.
Yeah.
What we've anticipated is actually setting aside $3 million for the, the three years, including this year, next year, and the following year, so that we'd have $9 million available to us. And then, we looked at current forecasts, is showing that we would probably need to use that money in '22, '23 to get us through the economic correction.
Okay, so when you say setting aside, people are going to think that we're going to bury a coffee can with some money in it somewhere.
It's just going to go, it's essentially another name for our reserve.
Okay, so it's just going to stay.
But we just wanted to show Council that we were, we did, we want to be very transparent about what was in that reserve, and instead of just letting it fall to the bottom and having the reserves be whatever, 12, 10% or whatever at the end, not 12, but maybe 10, we've said, we need to show, because we, this is a specific strategy, and we, we just really think it's something that's, we should employ, and we wanted, it's kind of a policy issue too for the Council. We said, listen, we think it's a good idea, since we've been so long into this recovery, to anticipate a, a downturn in the economy at some point in the next five years, and so, we specifically just identified it, and we'll, so those, at $3 million a year, essentially, we'll just go into, into the same dollars, it'll fall in the same bucket, the same accounts, so you see where that says ending reserves. That's what will happen with it.
Right, so to help me just understand this, so we're being less aggressive in, in spending down our reserves in anticipation of the downturn?
Yes.
Is that another way to say it?
Yes.
So, all right. But so, we're, we're still on a five-year trajectory to get us to 8%, but we're being more cautious in, in, in adopting a deficit budget in, in order to spend.
The other way we could have done it, frankly, is just, we could have reduced our sales tax by that much in those same years. We could have just, we could have done it, we anticipate that this is not going to be an expense issue, it's going to be a revenue issue coming into the city. But this is just a way we can still, we can have a conversation about economic downturn. Otherwise, we could have just reduced our projections on sales tax, $3 million a year in those same years, and essentially, effectively, the same outcome.
I see.
And then actually, and actually, that's, and actually, what we did, so it's a little bit a combination of both. So, so when you look back at the sales tax, and we kind of, you kind of showed those graphs, and you kind of see that, you kind of see the dip in the local sales tax, and then you see the dip in the, the urban revenue sharing, which is the secondary. So, so really, we're looking at, when we have an economic correction, it's really a two-year window that it impacts us, the initial impact. We get the initial impact the first year with the recent thing, so sales tax, sales taxes start to go down when you get that kind of a correction, and then your income goes down, and then your income tax goes down, but we don't get that for another two years. So, then as your sales tax hopefully starts to recover, then we get reduced income tax though, because we're on that two-year lag. So, we kind of had, get a hit the first year, and then we kind of get a hit two years later. And so, we wanted to make sure through the forecast, one, that we've accommodated that in the revenues, and so, that's in there. So, we have reduced revenues. And so, when we get to here, we, the reason why we put this at a, at a line below is we want to make sure that you can see what the, what the true operating budget is, which is above the line, okay? And then, so when we get out to '22, '23, or '21, '22, let's say, you can see that that's our true operating budget, and there's where our, our gap is, and because that's what we try to do, and that's what we'll show on the next slide, though, is the gap, the gap between the revenues coming in and the expenditures going out, and are we closing the gap, or are we widening the gap? And so, we wanted to be able to show that at this point out in '22, '23, we think the gap at that point, because you're getting hit, you're getting the second hit from the urban revenue sharing, you're going to have a gap wider than we will be able to cover with our reserves. And so, at that point, you'll need to take with our normal reserves, if we hadn't set the money aside. And at that point, we'd have to apply those reserves in order to maintain our services. So, that's why we want to make sure we're very clear, we've, we've incorporated it into the sale, into the, into the revenues, and then this is our, how we think we should address it or get ready for it. It's kind of this, this methodology, not just let it drop to the bottom and manage it for the next five years, is to actually set it aside and say, yes, we have reserves, we're ready for the economic correction, here's how much we have. If it's greater than that, then we'll have to do something, something else, and if it's less than that, we can go a couple more years without having to make adjustments.
I have a question on that. When you say set it aside, what do you do with the money?
It's just on paper. It's set aside, it's in the same reserve account, this is just on paper. So, it's in the same reserve account as the reserves at the bottom. What we're saying is that we're doing, we're, we're being proactive on managing those, that particular funding, that this is the purpose of that funding. So, it's actually, it's allocating it without legally allocating it.
But all our dollars are.
It's all in the same investment pool.
They go, they get invested.
When it comes to cash, there's no difference. It's really just a management tool of how we're managing our reserves.
So, one of the sources for the general fund is the transfer from the enterprise fund, correct? So, when we talk about, I think of the enterprise fund sort of like a battery, right? If the general fund doesn't meet its obligations, you can deplete the battery, but if you have excess, you can put the money back into the enterprise fund, I would assume.
No, yeah. We, we have a policy, we don't use the enterprise fund to fill the gaps on the general fund. It's been stated for, with our, with the Council policy, we, that's why we mentioned it's, it's a CPI, it's not a stopgap. We've tried very hard, because the rating agencies are very concerned about the impact that has on the enterprise fund if we use it to fill gaps, or, and so, we've been asked in our financial policies to establish a methodology for increasing the transfer, and so today, that transfer is set at a number that you see back on, whatever slide it is, Brian, where it says enterprise transfer, and then, as Candace said, we have, we adjust it each year according to our financial policies and our commitment to the rating agencies by the CPI, which is what, 2% or 3% a year or so?
Yeah, 2%.
2%.
2% for next year.
So, that's, that's in the forecast is a 2% increase, and you can see that in the chart for the transfer, that you can see it's a pretty stable number going straight up.
Oh, you want to go to the graph?
Yeah. The, what has the, that one, there you go.
So, back to the, the graph we're looking at, in 2000, in '22, '23, when we're at an 8%, 8% of our reserves are, we've spent it down to 8%. At that point, is that when we say to our departments, going forward, our budget is going to be, we're going to spend what we bring in, and we're not going to continue to reduce our, our reserve account? At that point, we're not going to spend more than we take in?
Mayor, we would do a lot of things before that year, first of all, because we don't do one forecast and then wait five years and see how it goes. So, every year, we'd be looking, but if we were coming to a year that we were facing that, then that would be true, because we would not be able to draw reserves down any further than that. So, we, our financial policy is called for us to stay within 8% to 10%. We try to stay, for budget purposes, we try to stay about the 10% to budget, not knowing what might happen during the year, expenses might be greater, or revenues might come in less, and so, we want to make sure that our actuals never come below 8%, so we can keep our bond rating, bond ratings up and keep it financially stable. But yes, we would look that, if that was a, if we were facing that next year, then yes, we would be looking to not draw the reserves down, which means we would have to make sure that our expenditures within, were within the revenues that were coming in for that year.
But Mayor, just to be, be clear, we don't wait till year five to do that, right? So, it happens next year. So, next year, we do another five-year forecast, so year five becomes year four, and then we get a peek at what today is year six, we'll see that next year in the forecast. So, we'll be able to see any adjustments we've had to make, what year five looks like next year, which is that next year, you don't, we don't see on this page. So, we're always trying to be very careful, and that's like you pointed out earlier, we had these conversations with the departments over the last three or four years about do, having reductions of 2% or so. We did that because we saw out into the future, where now we see the 8%, we saw numbers that were much less than that. And by taking the actions that we've done in the last couple of years, has actually allowed us today to be able to show you a forecast that meets our criteria throughout the forecast period. But again, every year, we're going to come back next year, and we'll see that fifth year, which is now year six today, and then we'll have to, if we have to make any adjustments, we like to do that over a period of time and not wait until the eve before, I guess, if that makes sense.
Right. I anticipate over the next month or two, we're going to have a lot of discussions about the amount of city debt that's appropriate, and what we need to do to maintain our rating with the various agencies. So, relevant to that, expected conversation in these numbers, as long as we have a reserve at 8%, you don't think that's going to impact, anything less, more, that's the magic number we, we had.
And the debt side of the world is outside of the general fund.
Right.
As Candace mentioned, there's only, the prior 2008 bonds, there's only 160.
The average is $160,000 a year.
That's being paid, still being paid out of these funds.
Everything else is secondary property tax.
I get it. That's, that's a discussion for another day, is the debt, but the, the rating agency issue is relevant to the amount of money that we have in, in our reserve, correct?
Right, and the good news is.
8% is the magic number.
Yeah, it's the bottom of the number that we told them that we would be at, and so, when, and they look, they ask for the, I mean, we spent a lot of time with them on the five-year forecast, because they want to know what we've built into it, and a lot of the questions that are the items that Candace has already brought up, they ask about pension costs, they ask about your sales tax base, they want to know what's that. They look for diversity of revenues, and that's one of the things that we are challenged with in Mesa, is we don't have what they would consider the diversity of strength in revenues like other cities, because we're so dependent on sales tax, and they mention that quite often. So, that's kind of where our conversation goes with them, but they like to see, and that's why we've spent a lot of time with Council, and then we'll spend time with them on the five-year forecast and what's built into it. The debt side of it, they're really, their main concern is, you know, because we pledged secondary property tax, which has nothing to do with this, as long as the assessed values and the rates are being adopted to meet those obligations, that's what they're interested in. And then, they actually spend a lot more time on that side of it than worrying about what the level of services that we're providing our residents, making sure we can provide them water and sewer and the infrastructures in place. They're very concerned about infrastructure, so that, those are the kind of questions we typically get. But the debt side of the issue is really related to the voter-approved secondary property tax rates, and, and that's the, that's a separate issue than what's happening here. This is kind of the management of the services is what they look at over here.
And then, Mayor, also, to add to that, one of the things when we talk with the bond rating agencies, besides just the actual numbers that they go through, is they actually ask us about our policies. So, it's what is your financial policy, and what has your Council and your city done in the past, and have they been proactive? And some of the times that we've come back with them, when we get our, when we kind of get our results of our bond rating, and they'll actually say that they're, you know, impressed by the City of Mesa's being proactive and looking out and having plans for the impressed by the City of Mesa's being proactive in looking out and having plans for the future, so that they know that as we get out there, whether it's on the enterprise side or on the general fund side, that we're looking at, and so affect like economic correction, that we're taking steps today for something that we think is going to come. And that really helps us talking with the bond rating agencies, that we have plans in place, that we have policies in place, that we know how we're going to handle something when it comes up, we're planning today in order to handle that, so that we don't have those financial difficulties when we, when we get to those years. So the, the management side of it and the policies are actually just as important as all the numbers that we show them, on their confidence in us as a city to meet our obligations.
Makes sense. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to keep beating this up, but one of the, I guess, going back to my previous question, what I was trying to get at was, at what point would we, would we say, well, we're doing so well that we would consider reducing water rates or reducing electric rates to give the money back to the people that actually fund the enterprise, right? Like, has that conversation happened, or what, what point do you say, let's reduce our rates because we have so much money in reserves?
So Mayor, Councilman Whitaker, I don't know if we've ever gotten to that point, because $100 million, that's going to grow each year by 2% in the enterprise fund, is the model that Mesa's followed since the 1940s. To imagine how the general governmental fund, just based on mostly sales tax, sales tax today is $134, $135, $136 million. You take $134, $135 million of sales tax, you take the $108 million of the transfer, that's still not enough to cover public safety. And the rate of growth of, you know, pension costs are probably as much or higher than the rate of growth in the sales tax. Typically, there's been some conversations about the possibility that maybe the transfer would be eliminated or reduced significantly if there were a primary property tax. But to your, I guess the scenario would be, this would have to perform almost $100 million more a year, if it's at $134 million, and it'd have to be generating $108, $109 million on top of that, so it'd be a 70%, whatever, 80% increase in revenues somewhere else to be able to make that work, if that's, makes sense.
Yeah, so I guess the 20% reserve doesn't concern you guys as far as being too high. You actually think that it's a good amount to have, given the future years forecasting, right, to be able to deplete that reserve?
Councilman, to your point, and that's a great question, it, it doesn't concern me, because we are still spending more than we're bringing in.
Sure.
In every year. And so without that reserve, then we would be having to ask for reductions next year, or not, in the second year, I guess. Because while it's, but this is kind of the, the nature of the beast, because we're always trying to be very conservative about the revenues in the future, but the expenses are conservative, too. And so, yeah, the fact that we have 20% fund balances today is good, because it allows us to still continue to have a slight, what's the word? We don't have structural balance still, right?
Right?
If you look at that net sources and uses numbers, it's still negative across the board. And that means we're drawing down the fund balance each year. So that's, I guess that's my answer. Until we can get that part corrected, then I would agree with you, then we would probably say, yeah, let's, we can do something more. But right now, I'm...
That answers my question. Nice. So once you, the net sources and uses, once that turns into a positive number, then you say, okay, now we have access.
Now we have.
Until that's projected as a positive number, then we're...
I think that's the way to look at it, yeah.
Absolutely. Okay. And the, and well, the other thing, like, last to your previous point about a primary property tax, where are we at with, oh, I guess the question I would ask is, are, is it a goal to shift from an enterprise fund as a source for our revenue to a primary property tax?
Mayor and Council, that's your question, not, I mean, it's not...
So that would be a Council, that would be, okay.
I, we're, you know, how much time do we have for this?
And I don't want to get into that topic, I just want to, like, one of the things, as you brought up the primary property tax, I will just say, from my perspective, I believe a primary property tax is a more fair taxation as it goes wider across the board, based on how much property you have, rather than us always having to increase utility rates, right, water and electric to be our primary source. And disagree with me, if you will, I'm curious from staff's perspective, you have way more experience than I do, but it seems like a primary property tax would be a lot more fair than...
Yeah, Mayor, and Councilman, that's a great question, and it's, I think it's worthy of kind of looking into, actually, the way I, one perspective I have, and I'm not, you know, I can, we can look at this, but we're always kind of in public policy looking at the broadest base, the broadest base of application of any rate or tax. That's the best kind of equity across the, across a community that you can come up. So the broadest base you can come up with. The challenge with property tax is that, because of the way state laws are written and way oftentimes assessments are done, you can see a lot of sophisticated property owners can get their property taxes reduced, or there are quite a bit of utility users in the City of Mesa that are exempt from property tax. So one of the things that utilities does, in the broadest sense, okay, let's talk about it in the broadest sense, utilities actually pick up almost every account, whether you reside, do business, or you visit in Mesa. And the way I look at it is everyone is a beneficiary of those public safety services that certainly are supported by that. So regardless of whether you're a nonprofit church, governmental institution, school district, whatever it might be, or whether you're a sophisticated industrial complex or whatever that might be able to challenge and, and get exemptions on your property tax, everybody pays a portion of the utility rate, and they pay it because their meter is turning. So, but that's a conversation we can have, but that's one perspective, that I think the utilities does allow for a broader base of spreading that cost. I think maybe, but, and I think some of the bigger users of, of utilities are also some of the more sophisticated groups that sometimes are also, if we looked at the secondary property tax, how much they're paying there, I think it'd be a disproportionate, I mean, it'd be different proportion of what they're paying there. But it's, it's worth looking at.
Sure. And I guess maybe to the point of a more broad tax, if we did introduce, or if it was one of our goals to have a primary property tax with our strategic planning session coming up in a couple of days, maybe that's one of the conversations that we have. But I would just say, if we do introduce a primary property tax, with it being the goal to offset specifically residential utility rates, right, rather than when you talk about like the corporations or some of the other ones, perhaps you introduce a primary property tax that helps offset residential rather than going and offsetting, if that's possible.
I don't know, yeah, we can talk about it.
Sure. Thanks.
I'll just talk for 15 seconds on this, so time me. It's got to be voter-approved. 25 years ago, I was part of this, sit, I sat in this room, had this conversation, Wayne Brown, the mayor at the time, said, this is factually correct, we should have a property tax, it's a more stable way to do it, it's, you got three legs on your stool that way, but it's politically incorrect, because the voters of Mesa, Arizona are not going to create a new tax on themselves. When I retired from politics in 2000, and I knew I was never running again for any office, and so I didn't care if people hated me, I volunteered to be the co-chairman of the Let's Have a Property Tax campaign. So in 2002, that was on our ballot, it was probably the biggest defeat in the history of Mesa politics. We have tested this question in polling in recent years, and it's a non-starter. That is pretty much a guarantee, if you put on the ballot, asking the people of Mesa, hey, we got a good idea, let's start a new tax. It's not going to happen.
Right. And I think more specifically, it's the way that we word the tax as well, right?
And the way we worded it in 2002 was, we're not raising your taxes, we're shifting money from one, so that we have a more stable, that, that message was made very, very well, but it's not one that people want to hear. It is my personal experience on that. But I, but it's right, but it's correct. It is, it is correct. It would be, although, the, the argument that Mr. Brady makes for this, that, that's the argument that prevailed in our city council 80 years ago, when we decided that the, the more equitable way of allocating costs in our community is if, hey, if you're turning on the tap, we know you're there, we're going to ding you, as opposed to doing it through the property tax. So...
Yeah, and I was going to say, I, I'm more concerned about doing what's right, based upon us sitting in this room and studying issues, rather than worrying about my reelection campaign and wondering if that comes out right.
There's an economics to it, though, too. There's very much still.
Yeah, we, we can all get unelected, but on the same ballot, this question will, this question will fail along with us, if it's on the ballot. I'm sorry. Please proceed.
So Mayor and Council, really, just, just to kind of, just to kind of wrap it up and kind of pull it all together, I do want to, I don't want to be remiss in just thanking the, the Council and the departments and all of our employees here in the city. Because if you look at this last, if you look at this kind of last graph, and it kind of shows, again, this is what we're always, this is the bottom line, the bottom line is, what is the difference between the revenues that we bring in and the expenses that were anticipated for that demand of service? And so this is really what drives us and how we manage to it. And if you look at the, we put them all in one, but if you look at the, the dark lines are, are the current forecast, that's what we just showed you, that's where we think we're at, you know, kind of closing that gap. The lighter ones, that was last year's forecast, that's where we were, and that's where, as we see the, the huge difference in what's going on, because part of that, when you ask, hey, how was the forecast last year from the forecast this year, I guess that might be our third or fourth thing, is that there was a lot of effort in the city to look into the expense budgets, to make sure that we were able to, to service our customers and keep that quality in our service, and still be able to close that gap so that we are better financially stable going forward. And you can see how much that gap came down between all of those things. So that's just one of those, looking at the expense side, the revenues coming in, all those things kind of compound together. But I don't, I don't want to be remiss in saying all the effort that comes from the employees here in the City of Mesa, and what they put into this, besides just all the economic factors that we look at, there's a lot of humans behind this who are, who are making this happen. And that's where we are this year, and that's why we want to be conservative as we go forward, to make sure that when we're adding services or expanding services, that we have the ability to sustain them over time, because we certainly don't want to add something and have to take it, take it away in three years, and those types of things. So that's what we do. So with that at the end, just April, April is budget meeting month, and so every time we're, every time you meet in April, you'll have some type of a budget information in front of you. There's been a slight change since we did this calendar, not, not too much, but, and that's just moving the non-utility CIPs down a little bit, so we can get kind of public safety in front of you a little bit sooner. And so we'll come out with that. But just look forward to the month of April, where we'll be coming back, and we'll give you kind of the revised forecast, we'll be revising this as we get new sales tax numbers and so forth, and then giving you the proposed budget. So just as a reminder, we come to you with a proposed balanced budget, we tell you what's in it, what's not in it, and then we have the departments come and kind of tell you from their service levels how that affects them for the next year, and then we kind of wrap it up at the end of April. So, so look forward to April.